So it's 6:05, this is the June 24, 2013 meeting of the Bradlborough Planning Commission. I'll call this meeting to order and let's take care of the minutes just before we go to our guest speaker. Are there -- is there a motion to approve them?
They're moved.
Okay.
And seconded.
Okay, seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor of approving the June 10 minutes?
Very thorough, as usual.
Okay. Aye. Anybody opposed? Okay, so having taken care of that, present is the former Director of the Wyndham Regional Commission, Chris Campini.
Current. At least right now he is, right? Geez.
I don't know why I said that, Chris. By the way--
Just to see if we're listening, right?
Yeah, by the way, it's one of those things where you find out you've been fired at the worst possible time. So, excuse me. The current Executive Director of the Wyndham Regional Commission will share with presentation for us, and I'll yield before you, Chris.
Okay. Well, thanks for the invitation, I think. I hope I'm still hired, Rod. So happy to be here, happy for the invitation. So when I was first invited, initially I was going to speak primarily about the recommendations that came out of the Energy Generation Siding Commission, Siding Policy Commission. But I understood from Sue that really what we need to talk about is the current Section 248 processes, and then what I'm going to do, and I'm going to, so what I'm going to do is talk about what you can do with municipal plans now, the standing of plans, and the Public Service Board process. Then I'm going to talk about what bylaws can and cannot do. And then I'll get into the Energy Generation Siding Commission's recommendations. Now, this is going to be text-heavy, and I apologize for that, but there's actually some method, and I violated one of the cardinal rules about not having too much text, but the reason I did this, actually, is I'll leave this with Sue and Rod, and you'll have handy-dandy in one place all of the statutory references that you could possibly need, at least as far as the current statutes go. So--
Can I work with Chris?
Yeah, sure, sure. And since we actually have an attorney in the audience, you want to see the statutory language and stuff.
I thought he was the lighting coordinator.
I have a lot of hats.
He wears lots of different hats.
So, as you know, with town plans, you're expected to balance a number of different needs and priorities, right? There's not necessarily one element that dominates everything. But, of course, part of what you're supposed to plan for are public services and facilities, and that includes utilities. You're also supposed to take into account myriad of the land uses, including forest, recreation, commerce, industry, public, semi-public use of housing, a number of different issues. Now, specifically, a municipal plan should include a map and statement of present and perspective of community facilities and public utilities. We're talking public utilities. We're not talking only facilities, utilities that are owned by the public. Think of that as basically anything that, any type of power generation that's covered under Title 30. So it's not, so when you see public utilities, that doesn't mean it's owned by the public, but it's considered to be a public good. You're also supposed to be covering power-generating plants and transmission lines, and then municipal plans shall include an energy plan, which includes a statement of policies on the development of renewable energy resources. So when we get into the Energy Generation Siding Commission discussion, a lot of this is not going to be new. It's actually going to be the background information that's going to develop this new. Now, in 30 BSA Section 248, I'll just refer to it from here on out as Section 248, that addresses the role municipal plans have in the certificate of public deliberations process. And one of the things I'm going to stress to you is that it's the plans that the Public Service Board considers. It's the plans of a municipality, not their zoning ordinances or bylaws. And it states here, "Before the Public Service Board issues a certificate of public good as required in this subsection, it shall find that the purchase, investment, or construction with respect to an in-state facility will not unduly interfere with the orderly development of the region with due consideration having been given to the recommendations of the municipal and regional planning commissions, the recommendations of the municipal legislative bodies, and the land conservation measures contained in the plan of any effect of municipality."
Again, the plan is the town plan.
Right.
Yep.
Correct. And when it comes to the regional planning commissions, of course, the regional plan. Now, when it comes to regulation of small projects, it's actually a very, it's a much more expedited process. Basically, an applicant has to wait. They submit their application to the Public Service Board, they have 10 days, they have to wait before they can begin construction. And during that time, the interconnecting electric company has to comment on any interconnection requirements, and if they don't hear, in a 10-day period passing without delivery by the electric company, a letter that raises interconnection issues, in accordance with this subsection, a certificate of public good shall be deemed issued on the 11th day without further proceedings. So they don't have to come into the town, exclusively within the purview of the Public Service Board, and basically, if no concerns are raised within that 10-day application period, they get their certificate of public good. And this is for any solar net metering system of 10 kilowatts or less. I know that's come up in a number of towns, this issue about the aesthetics of these smaller systems, but when we get into what zoning bylaws can and cannot do, zoning bylaws are not to regulate powered-generating plants and transmission facilities regulated under 30 BSA Section 248. So you don't really have that control. Bylaws are not to prohibit, or have the effect prohibiting, installation of solar collectors, clotheslines, or other energy devices based on renewable resources.
So is this clothesline an energy device?
Yes.
It's an energy conserving device, I would presume.
You can put your children around and spin it around.
And this may seem, especially to a planning question, it may seem dumb, but while zoning bylaws are before town plans, they are not town plans. And there's actually a fair amount of confusion out there that plans and bylaws are the same thing, and they're not. And I know in Vermont, it can be particularly confusing because in many places, plans do not have regulatory standing that they do, typically plans in other places don't have regulatory standing that they do in Vermont. You're typically right, that's referred to, that's the role of the zoning bylaws. And so just don't complain more than one with the law is very specific about where plans are concerned and where bylaws are concerned. Now, what bylaws can do is you can improve access to renewable energy resources. It says, "Any municipality may adopt zoning or subsequent bylaws to encourage energy conservation and to protect and provide access to, among others, the collection or conversion of direct sunlight, wind, running water, organically derived fuels, including wooden agricultural sources, waste heat, and geothermal resources," including those recommendations contained in the adopted municipal plan, regional plan, or both. So your ordinance can put regulations in effect that basically make these things more available. So what do you mean? Well, you may in your zoning bylaws, other cities and states allow this, basically recognizing people's right, their right to solar access, not allowing other structures or trees or other things to impede that solar access.
Would that be in the plan or in the zoning bylaws?
In the zoning bylaws. So what it says, well, it basically says, "You can take affirmative action to ensure access, but you cannot regulate the generation of that solar, of that renewable energy or any other energy production." So you can basically use your bylaws to promote--
But don't control.
--those resources, but you can't control the capturing of those resources and turning them into usable electricity or other power. Does that make sense? So you may, so also you may want to, where it talks about, it talks about waste heat. So you may say in your ordinance that sources of waste heat should be co-located with other users of that waste heat, or that, or let's see, or have I crossed it, have I crossed over now into the generation realm? But basically, if you could use your ordinance in a way that maximizes access to those resources, then the law will let you do that.
We don't have any of those in our bylaws, do we?
No, the current bylaws, we have a recommendation or an action step in the, just adopted town plan, to review aspects of renewable energy installations with regards to the negative impact that they may have, as well as the ability of property owners to install.
We don't actually have anything in our zoning.
No. No, it's a recommendation to review that when we rewrite the zoning.
So going back, I'm going to clarify that bylaw example, so, I mean, in first blush, you need to think these things through, and I'm going to think through this example some more. So like the waste heat, what it may say is nothing in your bylaws, you may, as a policy in your bylaws, you may have a policy that says that your policies would actually encourage co-location of structures that can make use of waste heat when the energy generation facility has been cited. You'd want to make sure your bylaw facilitates that as opposed to maybe-- So in Vermont, plans can establish a town's recommendations for energy development. Zoning bylaws cannot, except in the affirmative, in terms of giving better access to those resources. So when it comes to the Public Service Board, always focus on the plan. While, basically what Section 248 requires is that the Public Service Board give what's called due consideration to town plans and the positions of municipalities. So what that due consideration is, that's been a topic of much discussion, and frankly was a big part of the impetus for the creation, the government's creation of the Energy Generation Siding Policy Commission. But one of the things that has come up time again, just like in Act 250, I know you've heard of this, I'm sure, about Act 250, is that the Public Service Board, like the Natural Resources Board, they're looking for clear, unambiguous, discrete policies as far as energy generation is concerned. And we had a forum about, well, close this time last year in Newthing, where we had Agency of Natural Resources and Public Service Department come and talk about municipal participation in the Section 248 process, and they kept driving us home again and again. There were questions about bylaws, and they said, they drove home again the law that the Public Service Board will not look at, does not consider bylaws in making their decisions. And Rod, you were there, the reason that John Daley gave at the time was kind of odd in that he said, well, part of the reason was that you can get variances to bylaws and you can't get variances to plans. Now, I didn't, I didn't go to law school, I did not spend a night in the Hollywood Express, but I kind of get what he's saying, but it was--
Not really. Well, I just, you know, I'm no lawyer, but it wasn't very compelling.
But I would just, I would make, but more to the point, I think it is that the law doesn't give the Public Service Board the authority to look at bylaws. And the Public Service Board, we participate, we've participated in a number of different, Public Service Board dockets in a number of different projects, most intensively the Vermont Yankee Dockets. And just to be clear, we don't take a position in support of or against this continued operation, we're mainly focused on the eventual decommission. But we spent literally thousands of hours participating in that process, it always relates back to the plan. And--
Is this, again, regarding language, kind of like the Jan Goff stuff, that it has to be very clear and specific?
And the other, and I've given you a link here to the Sissons Guide, which isn't a bad guide at all, but the other point that they made, and I would urge you to pay careful attention to, is that those energy policies don't conflict or aren't given, provided with context relative to the other provisions of your plan. And I'm going to use an example later where, like, for instance, if you make this case throughout your plan that renewable energy is essential for the survival of the world, and then you come back in your policy and say, "We don't want any energy generation here," the Public Service Board is going to say, "Well," and frankly, probably the other parties are going to point to it and say, "This is ambiguous. You have, you have this policy of language that is encouraging renewable energy generation if any of this other policy that basically says no renewable energy generation is allowed in the town." So what you'll want to do is be very specific about different types of energy generation, and frankly, make the case why some are appropriate and why some are not, and point back to other places in your plan that reinforce that, whether it's air quality, aesthetics, other natural resource concerns. Make your case, explain those policies within the context of the full regime of policies within your plans, so that that way you can demonstrate the context in which you create your energy policies. Does that make, does that make sense? And frankly, that goes for any policies, it'll be the same in Act 250 proceeding, too. Participating in the Section 248 processes, Public Service Board processes are quasi-judicial. How many of you have actually, have you ever attended a Public Service Board hearing? Any? How many of you have attended, have attended an Act 250 hearing? They're different worlds. The Section 248 process is much more formal and much more structured. If you go to an Act 250 here, typically, when they come around to the town, they say, they'll say, "What are your issues?" You can state what issues you really want to have considered in the process, you'll be submitting letters, but you're not doing these formal filings. Public Service Board relies on an on-the-record review, contested case process, and for a town to participate, many towns will just send letters if you do that, if you just want to basically get your opinion across. Make sure you send those letters to all parties, so they're aware of what your position is. But understand that those will not be part of the record, and they will not be part of what the Public Service Board bases this decision on. It can help the Public Service, I mean, the Public Service Department in its public advocate role to explain what the town's position is, but that is not going to be the basis on which, that's not going to be part of the record on which the Public Service Board is going to make its decision. To participate as a party, you have to formally file a petition to intervene, and party status is not automatic, and you have to file a notice of appearance. Public Service Board is very, whether you're a municipality or a private property owner, they tend to allow that process to be very open, but you have to file to participate. And especially for a town the size of Bradlborough, representation by legal counsel helps. We participate in Public Service Board dockets, Wyndham Regional Commission does pro se, meaning we represent ourselves, and we have to rely heavily on volunteer participation by our commissioners. And even if you participate with legal counsel, you will still, as planning commission members and others, depending on the size of the project, it can still be incredibly time-consuming, just constantly researching the information, reading all the material associated with the dockets. It's a rather intensive process. So you're fortunate being a larger town, I believe you have counsel under tenure, most towns do, but bylaws suggest, if you decide the project is important enough for the town to have intervened or status, that you make use of counsel, that will save a lot of time. So any questions about all of that, about the current process? Was it clear as much, or--
That would do a pretty good job of playing. About how big is the town to a kilowatt pressure?
I don't know. I don't know how big it is.
It can fit on the roof of a 3,000-square-foot house. So, yeah, so the two, the two rows of panels that you see on Route 9, on Westin Avenue there, it's all the hell, forward about 300.
So each row is probably 10 kilowatt?
No. It'd need to be three times that size--
Oh, to be 10 kilowatt.
--to be 10 kilowatt. So it's probably--
That's a good, that's a good, that's a good frame of reference.
It's probably a three, bit of a three.
So now I'm going to get into the Siding Commission recommendations, and I'm not going to go deep, deep into it. I'm mainly going to talk about what's going to change as far as municipal plans, regional plans, and frankly, what the state is going to step up and do for these to take effect. So what they were tasked with was development of a state roadmap for meeting Vermont's statutory energy targets and comprehensive energy plan goals. This came out of the controversies around especially the wind projects. But what we're beginning to see is, as you have larger and larger solar projects coming around, more conservative solar projects, and then, I don't know, did any of you attend Siding Commission hearing in Bradlborough? There were a number of concerns raised about biomass, about the biomass project in Springfield. And so this was not just about wind. And so the Public Service Department, well, I was going to go through these, with these recommendations. One of the things that came out is that for the Public Service Board to make better decisions, the state needs to better define what the state's energy needs are and what resources are available in-state to actually provide those needs. And so to that end, the Public Service Department, or the Agency of Natural Resources and others, is to develop a roadmap for meeting statutory energy targets and the comprehensive energy plan, and this is going to be interesting because the comprehensive energy plan, where now I would say is largely aspirational, is that a fair assessment, Rod? It's now going to have--
It's very kind.
It's going to have much more weight now, and so they're going to, and actually, the Public Service Department is beginning this summer, an effort, and I'll mention this and I'll go into more detail on them, but basically, an effort to look at really what Vermont could realistically produce within the state lines, and realistically, how much we'd be looking for to come in from the outside. What mix of energy would be necessary to actually meet the comprehensive energy plan goals? And so that's part of this need to identify the mix of in-state and out-of-state energy sources, the anticipated mix of technologies, areas of high and low potential for energy siting, economic and environmental costs and benefits, and broad parameters of cumulative impact. And this fits in with this other part of regional planning commissions playing a bigger role in, sorry, I got to slide that, I was sequencing. Regional planning commissions playing a bigger role in, in energy siting, planning, working with our towns. So the governor's, the governor's charge, the commission is to serve the best practices for siting approval of electric generation projects, and includes all facilities except for net meters, facilities, and for public participation and representation in the siting process, and to report to the governor and the Vermont Legislature on their findings on April 30, 2013. How many of you have looked at those recommendations? So the process by the state agencies, developing more guidance, more policy guidance, and more resources for consideration by the regional planning commissions working with our towns, they have recommended that the RPC shall develop energy guidelines, policies, and land use suitability maps as part of our regional plans in order to identify high and low potential areas for electric generation siting consistent with the legislative energy goals of the comprehensive energy plan. And we're supposed to get this guidance from Public Service Department and A and R. And if we do this, regional planning commissions should have formal party status, in other words, it's automatic party status, and their plans shall be given substantial consideration. Now, what substantial consideration means relative to due consideration is not clearly defined, but it's more than due, substantial is more than due.
Oh, is that, is that what they mean by that? They establish that substantial is more than due?
Yes. They get into a bit more of the details, but rather just give due consideration than they should be given more weight. And this is really the catcher, the kicker. If the term by the Public Service Department, that the regional plans are consistent with legislative energy goals, legislative energy goals and the comprehensive energy plan, the plan shall be dispositive. In other words, they will be controlling. And that's a major change. Now, that doesn't exist yet, this is just a recommendation, but that is, that puts the role of regional plans in a completely different light. It also makes for a completely different process. Right now, our plans are reviewed by any other agencies, and this would actually have the Public Service Department determining the consistency of our plan with the comprehensive energy plan and statute.
This is your plan of the regional commission, not necessarily ours?
Right. Now, our plan, of course, takes into account different provisions of all of the municipal plans, and our plan is ultimately a product of our town, so this wouldn't be to the exclusion of municipal plans, it would be in consultation with all of our municipalities. Now, one thing I'll just note here is, it was acknowledged throughout this process that some regional planning commissions, we're creatures of our towns. Our commissioners are appointed by our town select boards, and that supervises us with guidance. And it could be, just like in the Act 250 processes, in some cases, regional planning commissions or commissions have taken the position that the RPC will not participate in Act 250 processes. A commission could just as easily say, "We're not going to do this, it's too controversial, it's too difficult, it's not where we want to go." So in that case, if the regional planning commission does not update the regional plans, include the guidelines, policies, land use suitability maps, et cetera, you won't get substantial consideration, you'll go back to the default due consideration, and you don't have a chance of being dispositive. But again, this is just a recommendation, this is all, this is not law, this is just what's being discussed. Rod, do you like, you have a question, or?
Well, I'm interested in the view from the RPCs concerning what the pitfalls of actually achieving the dispositive status would be, in fact. It seems like it puts a really heavy burden on the regional planning commissions to actually reconcile competing objectives and competing interests of individual towns that are their members.
It does.
And then, and then beyond that, you also end up having to have a quantitatively rigorous and qualitatively rigorous plan that would survive disposition--
Based on those guidelines.
Based on those guidelines, which would be difficult to achieve, I suspect. So in other words, you know, you're in a hot seat in two different directions, and so I guess my point, or my question is, is the Wyndham Regional Commission contemplating whether it wants to achieve that goal or avoid that role?
Don't know. We haven't had that discussion yet. Have we made, and, you know, that's, this is the challenge. I mean, it was never, I don't believe it was ever really the direction that the Siding Commission was going in, that town, they kept, they referred to it as a veto card. The towns would ever have a veto card on what energy project go in their municipalities, it's just this too small planning unit on which to base state energy policy and decisions. So what made sense next is at the regional scale. And so if communities, if our towns, if our municipalities, and that's ultimately who's going to make the decision, want the region to have more affirmative say-so in what energy development is appropriate within the region as a whole, this would be the process to go through. And in collaboration with the state, giving us policy information, data, technical support that we would need to do that. So it wouldn't be easy. We would have to resolve a lot of conflicts because we're far within the region, we're far from having agreement really on any type of power generation, not just wind, but I would argue, I would say solar. I mean, I'll just, I'll note that at the, when the Energy Generation Society Commission had their meeting in Brattleboro, there were a lot of folk in Brattleboro saying, wind is great. Well, I don't see really developing winds in the town of Brattleboro. Whereas some of the towns where you have wind potential were saying, we'd really like, prefer not to see wind, whereas you had others saying, yes, please do develop it on our regional lines. So we've met with some towns. Some of the towns that have wind development have asked us why we have, why the Wind and Regional Commission haven't been more supportive, and other towns that opposed it said, why weren't you more against it? So more than most regional commissions, we've probably had more experience with this than anybody else. I believe, I would have to look at the numbers, but I believe when you look at all the total, total right now of existing renewable energy generation in the state, the wind in region produces the most. If you think about our dams on the Deerfield and on the Connecticut, and including the current wind development in Searsburg, and then if you look at what's already been permitted and not developed, again, Deerfield Wind, Luhair and Hydro, Basin Farms, we're going to be generating even more. And that's before you even look at the megawatts generated by Vermont Yankee. So we already have a lot of experience with this, whereas other regions don't. And so we'll have to have a conversation within the commission about whether or not we want to take this on. But if we want to have this kind of say-so in state policymaking, in state decision-making, we're going to have to go through some kind of process like this. Otherwise, how, you know, what's the Public Service Board going to act on, right?
Right. But it's, it's the question of what kind of a bargain is it? The burden seems really high.
It wouldn't be easy.
No.
But, you know, that, nothing, most, you know, it's, oh, it's cliche, or less things are wild, aren't they? So, so the position, I mean, I attended most of the meetings, and I would say, the position that I took was I at least feel like we should be given this option. And then it's up to the commissions to decide whether or not you take advantage of it. But what we were hearing from our towns was, we want more control. That's the only way that we could see, that I, you know, that I saw that you're going to, that you're going to get it.
And in writing these guidelines, does that include things like community-owned power generation? I mean, what I know a lot of people are opposed to is these big corporate entities coming in and building like a wind or solar, and people want to...
In this presentation, I don't get deep into it, but that, one of the, that is strongly encouraged among the recommendations, is for community, and that's part of what they're, what the commission hopes will come out of this process, is for communities to agree what they do want and where they would like to have it and what kind it would be. And that would actually, they're, they're talking about a differently tiered process, and where you have that, it would actually expedite the process. So they, I encourage you to look at the, look at the commission's study. And then one of the commissioners, gosh, I wasn't trying to say her name, it'd be rather take my time, actually offers a very interesting dissenting opinion where she does, I believe she does make the case that there should be more control at the municipal level. Municipal plans found to be compatible with the revised regional plans, this is a recommendation, shall be given substantial consideration by the Public Service Board in the siding process. So to the extent the regional plans can fore, I mean, the municipal plans can fore with the regional plan, and of course, the regional plan definitely builds off of the municipal plans, it would give the municipal plans greater weight. And again, municipalities could, just like, you know, this, the municipal plans, it's always the town's option to develop them or not, and also to submit them to a regional commission for review or not. So where this really changes things is that relationship, I would say, between, between the municipalities and the development of that initial, initial regional plan, because that's where the heavy lifting would be. So where are we now relative to the Energy Generation Society Policy Commission recommendations? They're just recommendations right now. There's, there should be legislative hearings during the summer, but right now, nothing has changed. One of the things, and I'm, and I know that may, again, may sound like duh, but when the Siding Commission released its report, I got a number of calls saying, well, how are we going to do this? Well, there's nothing to do yet. There's nothing, statute hasn't changed. We don't know exactly how this is going to be implemented. But I am excited about this. Public Service Department is kicking off a total energy study to identify the most promising policy and technology pathways to employ in order to reach Vermont's energy and greenhouse gas goals. And what, the reason why I'm excited about this is that the idea is to get into the nitty gritty about what really is possible. And I've been asked to participate in this, so for better or worse, somebody from your region will be participating in this effort. So it's going to be, I don't know that they're going to challenge, it says, these are included but not limited to the goals that Vermont will meet, ninety percent of its energy needs from renewable sources by 2050, and greenhouse gas emissions will be reduced to seventy-five percent of nineteen ninety levels by 2050. I mention this because I've had a number of people complain that the CEP is unrealistic and those goals need to be revised. I don't know that this effort is going to get into that. I don't have a personal opinion about that. But one of the things that they are going to need to get into is our whole renewable energy credit system where, right now, we're basically able to sell those, and there's an argument out there that right now, the way Vermont's renewable energy policy is set up, it actually doesn't result in a reduction in greenhouse gas emissions because it allows other out-of-state operations to continue to release those. Yes, sir.
Is, when we, you know, from the definition of this, is, when we talk about ninety percent of energy, is that transportation, electric, and heating?
Yes, all of the, all of them. And that's, I will say, that's another, that's another good, I think, really good role. When we talk about this additional weight being given to the regional planning commissions, regional plans, that is an area where we can try to address everything in total, at least at a regional scale, as far as, you know, how can land use manage the transportation and transportation policy decision, including provision of public transit, interact in order to reduce vehicle miles traveled, emissions, policy concerning siding of recharge station for electronic vehicles, that kind of thing. So when we talk about that energy component of the regional plan, it's not just about generation, it's also about meeting all these goals of the comprehensive energy plan. So I'm glad you asked that question, because it's not just about generation, it's also about conservation. Did I overanswer your question?
No, I got it.
Okay.
I think those goals are totally unrealistic.
What's that?
I would venture that those goals are totally unrealistic.
Unrealistic.
Well, if you get one, you'll usually get two.
I mean, it's a...
They're a Susan O'Brener if you can nail number one.
And like I said, I brought it up because, I mean, a number of our commissioners have voiced that very opinion, so I don't, I don't want to ignore it, that, you know, just as a gimme, that those, so hopefully, you know, in an objective analysis, as you go through this effort, if, if one of the findings is, that would be difficult or impossible to do, that would be in that, and then we can proceed on realistic policy, beyond just aspirational policy. And again, our commission that have a position on that, I'm not trying to voice one, but I did want to just acknowledge that, that there's not universal agreement, that that's attainable. I don't know what Brattleboro's position is. Rod, you want me to put you on the spot and say what's your position, sort of town's position?
Everyone has more modest goals than that, embodied in the most recent term plan, but it structures them in the same way, which is the taking a base here and then a reduction by, you know, some point out in the future. Maybe the single biggest concern that we encountered with the town plan was even measuring it in the first place. So particularly with transportation, just as an example, we ended up excluding the greenhouse gases, greenhouse gases that are emitted by transportation on ninety-one because we couldn't identify it.
Not in control.
We went out of control of it, and there was no, there was no ready way of quantifying it anyway. And so we end up with this, one of these ironies where at best, you could assume that those emissions are, if you like, labeled or tagged at the point where the vehicle is registered. So if it's a resident of New Jersey or Connecticut or Massachusetts or something, whatever, whatever jurisdiction they're, they're domiciled in is what's going to control to some extent their transportation choices and how they, and how they use it. So just that first goal of obtaining ninety percent of energy needs from renewable sources by 2050, if that includes transportation, given the constitutional, federal constitutional requirements that you can interfere with in state commerce, and the federal government's regulation of most things to do with transportation, including vehicle emissions and so forth, it makes it really difficult, it seems to me, to achieve that goal.
It also has some pretty profound implications for transportation funding policy.
Right. And then, and then you match that up with, with the state agency transportation basically saying, they don't have any money.
But it's also at odds with wanting more tourism and commerce.
Right. It's in conflict with, it's in conflict with so many other things, the state policy that it's just a mind-bolting, where they could write it down and then, and then press print.
That, that, the piece that you just brought up, it's always interesting to me, that conflict between, for such a tourism dependent state, yeah. I did though, I mean, if ever, I saw, I did see one of, I don't know if it was one of Brattleboro's Teslas, but it was one of Vermont's Teslas with a canoe and a kayak and a bicycle on top of it.
Oh, that's, that's...
And so that's multi-boat and EV, right?
That's Brattleboro's.
So the take-home message is, I believe the focus is, is going to continue to be on municipal plan, not the zoning bylaw. So that's, so if you want to tighten up your policies, that's where you focus. And it's also, your, your plan is also what we look at when we update our regional plan. We look at bylaws too, but it's really the plans. Clear, concise, strict policy directives, as the shalls and not shoulds, are going to provide you with the strongest position. So if you feel strongly about a specific type of generation, or anything, frankly, in your, in your plan, you need to be clear, you need to be concise, and make sure that those plan elements, that there aren't other plan elements that are going to compromise or undermine those directives. And we had that section I mentioned before last summer, the Public Service Department and Agency of Natural Resources, they did bring up that in, in one case, the Public Service Board, saying ruled against the town is not probably really what they did, but basically pointed out that the town's plan was in conflict with itself. And so to some extent, a plan is always going to be in conflict with itself, right? And that's, that's a challenging thing to do. But I use the example here, renewal, you know, if you make this strong case for how important renewable energy is in your town, but then you have no policy about what kind of energy generation you feel is important to meet that goal within your town, what your town is going to contribute, it's going to be hard for the Public Service Board to say, when you bring your position to it, yeah, this town has a clearly articulated vision about how it wants to balance out those goals. And so to that end, put your energy policy directives in context with also the rest of the plan, and lay out what your priorities are.
So when you are updating your regional plan...
What we're doing now.
...with this regard, and you're reviewing our plan, will you have any comments or suggestions for us to clarify what's in our, our report?
Probably more so as you do your other plan updates.
Because we just finished.
We just did it.
We don't want to look at it, we can't.
And the other, just so you know, too, is we update our regional plan, our intent, certainly my intent, is we need to do a comprehensive update, our plan expires October 2014. But our intent is from, from here on out, to continue to update elements of the plan as opposed to just a wholesale update again in eight years. And this is one of the things I'm trying to encourage other towns to do as well, to keep that plan fresh. And also, you know, typically, we've always focused on, you know, the primary focus is done on land use, but especially at municipal level, it'd be great to see more information, more guidance for capital improvement plans, capital improvement budgets, those kinds of things. Because one of my concerns is ultimately about, we talk a lot about the sustainability of energy, I worry about the sustainability of the energy of our people who govern our towns and, because the expectations coming down from the state, federal government, it's putting a greater and greater burden on the responsiveness of towns in a timely manner, and how that gets done. So I'm sorry to use this as an opportunity to, to make that pitch, but we, we really do need to figure out a way to make Vermont's system of governance work better. And in some cases, it may be sharing more resources among towns. But, you know, Brattleboro, I mean, you are a regional hub, so it's a little different, it's a little different element, or that's a little different dynamic for Brattleboro or for a number of our smaller towns. And Brattleboro has enough on its plate, and your resources are already stretched thin, so I'm not, I'm not suggesting that that's coming easy, but you've got professional staff to provide you support. A lot of towns don't, and we need to figure out how to make this whole system work, because too often we hear, you know, we heard about these planning needs and opportunities, and perhaps grants to help us do that, but we just didn't have the time or resources to even respond. And so we've got to figure out how to, how to do that. Any other questions?
Another question.
Can I just go up on the mic so the people on town can see? Or hear you really?
Ted Montgomery, Tom Meeting, a comment about the goal. My understanding is that that goal was developed based on what is being achieved in Europe, and in particular, in Germany, and they are on track to achieve those goals. And I think it was the House Committee on Energy and Natural Resources that led that. Margaret Cheney, the vice chair of that committee, has toured Germany and studied what's happening there. And in fact, the towns that are furthest ahead in implementing that are becoming major tourist attractions.
Well, you know, my daughter went to Germany and probably toured those same places, and her opinion, what she learned was that they started right after the war, rebuilding towns in a more modern and sustainable manner, and we're nowhere near there.
I would agree that Germany, because their fuel is priced very differently than America and has been for decades, that they are ahead, but you could also look at the renewable energy cooperatives that have been formed there just in the last ten years, and they've got about eight hundred that have just sprung out in the last decade, and are now providing twenty-five percent of their electricity.
And I would say the other difference here, it gets back to what Rod, one of the things that Rod just mentioned, is in Germany, they're dealing with national energy policy, and here, we would be dealing with state energy policy within the context of the presence or absence of a large international policy.
Well, it's in the absence, I mean, you know, to take...
Well, I'm just saying, if we end up with a coherent national energy strategy, I'm hopeful.
I mean, there is no, there is no effective, there's a lot of guidance and encouragement at the federal level, but there's no, you know, the notion that there's, that Vermont is actually achieving a set of federal goals, or that it's, this is its version of implementing some sort of, set of federal standards, that's not the case at all. And thereby, you know, that's, that's a large issue, so things like transportation, technology, or choices, you know, energy choices of transportation, the extent of support for rail or, or, you know, electrification of, you know, personal motor vehicles or whatever, the federal government is basically nowhere.
Eddie, we just have, again, transportation funding right now, so much of our transportation funding is based on, still on gas taxes. And some would say that's a good thing, right, that you can, you can increase those taxes and decrease the use of gasoline, but still, that's still a very source...
Well, yeah, the state's things are increasing.
So then what do we do, we go to vehicle miles traveled?
Right.
And that's something, I was, I was participating in a number of the state transportation funding committee meetings, and, you know, we looked at that model, and at some level, it's really difficult without developing a national metric. And then how do you track that? Do people really want to be tracked? Because the issue in Vermont was, when you leave the state, are you responsible for the miles? A policy would say no, but then how do you know when somebody's in the state or out of state? And then how do you track that? And then we get into... And then we get into, you know, do you consult the National NSA and ask?
We were just going to say, you can say it earlier. They're going to add to that.
International relations, domestic affairs for that. I ain't commissioning that. Chris, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
It's, well, I definitely, I understood it, I understood your remark, but I'll pass it on to you. I hope that wasn't too, sorry, I was so wordy. Didn't lend itself very much to pretty English.
There, we'll wrap up too much.
Couple years ago.
There are future.
So I had, not really skipped, but done quickly through our initial opening things that we should do announcements that are already, which are more ways to Chris's time.
Absolutely, and just to be clear, the public hearing was more for July fifteen, so we're going to do it over. We'll be getting started.
Okay, are there any announcements?
I don't have any. Oh, well, no, I didn't have a announcement. So last two sets, one for meeting, they gave you the, the letter that the planning commissioner received on the W ninety technology at the eight thousand three hundred solar panel. Anyway, at their July second meeting, they're going to have a public hearing, invite public, the public to come speak about that project. And the applicant is also going to be there to present some reservation on projects they wish to share. They do not sign off on, and we're going to have a regional commission sign off on the forty-five day later food truck. So the, any comments that the town wants to submit to the commissioner on these two sets done by July eleventh, within the forty-five day period ends July eighteen. So there's still an opportunity for the commission to comment.
So we were the only ones that did sign off.
Yeah, so they don't get the waiter.
Well, since we have a little time to break, does anybody have any thoughts on that? Now, I can open us up to public comment, even though it's not a hearing yet.
Good.
You know, there are two members of the public here, if you'd like to say something. Well, then I suppose we'll recess for fifteen minutes and then we're going to have a public hearing on proposed zoning amendments for mobile food units and food trucks. Okay, so we're back on the record, it's June twenty-fourth at seven fifteen. Mark Eathier has left and I'm opening a public hearing on new ordinance related to what we quote, we call food trucks, also known as mobile food units and food trucks. So I'm not sure all of you signed in, but I think you did. And there's an information sheet in the corner. This hearing follows a piece in the paper where I sort of made a quote that I regret when I used the term. It's like the Wild West or something like that. And I know at least some of you are food truck operators. And I suspect that that was offensive. What I meant by that was that we don't have ordinances relating to traffic flow and pedestrian flow, which is a nice boring way to say that, but unfortunately, sometimes I'm a little colorful for my own good. And I don't think food trucks are the Wild West and I realize it's a bad thing for something serving clean, good food. And I don't want you to think that I think that about you, anyone out there that operates a food truck. So I just want to get that off my chest first.
Was that in the paper?
That wasn't the paper. I was in the back page, they put Rod in the front, just thinking of the back. But if you read it, it's still there and I need to think before I talk a little more.
Thanks for clarifying that, buddy.
You're welcome. If you, if you picked up our little sheet here, you'll see a couple of things that we thought might answer questions or be helpful for members of the public to know. The biggest, the biggest distinction being when whether a food cart or a mobile food unit is on public or private land. What we're doing only relates to a food truck, mobile food unit on private land. If it's on public, you need to get a vending permit through the town, and that's a different deal. And the primary goal of this ordinance is to ensure that food carts, food trucks, mobile food units don't adversely impact pedestrian traffic flow. And I'm hopeful that, I know many, many members of the public today are food car operators and you could help us if regulations do too much, too little, or have other adverse consequences. Anything to add to that, Rod? Okay, well, I'd like to open it up to the public because I assume at least a couple of you came here wanting to address the planning commission and have seen the proposed ordinances. So if anybody would like to step up to the microphone, you're welcome, we'd like to hear you.
Oh, my name is Phil Benzing. I run a food truck called Green Onions. And I just, I have a slight amount of concern, really specifically because I feel like a couple, or well, one amendment specifically sort of is, is sort of insinuating that the final decision is going to be put in, you know, one sole person's hands. I know there's like an appeal process if you get denied. But, you know, that, that concerns me slightly because, you know, as fair and, you know, outstanding as any one person can be, sort of putting these types of decisions into one specific person's hands, you know, that, that can be tainted in one way or another. So that's one of my concerns. And another being, and this may sort of be in my own head, but it's specifically stating here that like they want to, you guys want to open, you know, quote-unquote industrial areas to food trucks. And that to me sort of insinuates that that's kind of where people generally are feeling that we should be located and, you know, I, I just feel that, you know, there's, it's not really an optimal area to, you know, operate. So those, those are kind of just a couple of concerns that, that I have, sort of, not specifically.
Thank you, Phil. I also often be on the board that one would appeal to if they disagreed with the administrator. So if he says, well, you are not parking spaces, and you say, what are you talking about? That this person has a permit for five weeks to go to Mexico. And one, I think our current guy is pretty fair. But as with any zoning law, there's actually two roots of appeal. First, if the administrator, if you feel that he's missing something with the law, you go board number one, that's the DRB. So then you'll have at least five people reviewing it. And actually, there's another member of the board who's in there just now. And among them are a couple lawyers, and they'll take a look at the law. And if he, what he did was, he worshiped, he succeeded by, he's unjust, you have an opportunity to tell them why. And if they rule against you and you still think that it's wrong, you can actually go to the environmental court and you get a real judge. And everything that goes before the DRB, the board is on the record. And the environmental court has the power to review that. The whole, the goal of the whole thing is to ensure that the law we write is carried out the way it's intended. And I mean, you know, the old adage is about making sausage. I should be careful with these metaphors, but I thought it's kind of fitting with all the food.
It has nothing to do with the Wild, Wild West, right?
Right, right. And the, the system is designed to avoid what you fear. And that's, that's comfort I think I can offer you. With respect to industrial zones, I don't think that's limited to mobile food units, is it?
No. I don't want it to sound too like, like too inside baseball. Right now, in industrial districts in Brattleboro, restaurants not permitted use. And so what we're actually doing is changing that restriction so that restaurants could be permitted to use.
So you're actually opening up more.
So for instance, if somebody wanted to locate a restaurant at exit one industrial park, a diner or something similar, then they'd be able to do that. Similarly, if somebody wanted to operate a food cart there, they could do that. And we feel that it's by no means meant as a destination for food carts. Quite the opposite, it's meant to relax the restrictions so that you could actually locate a restaurant, a physical, permanent physical structure as a restaurant. So it's just a recognition that it's sort of an anomaly from this point.
We also think it's, it's reasonable to think that a food truck might want to go around to different, to different places.
There's also a larger trend that there's no longer large-scale industry in, in town the way there once was. So part of our overarching town plan, that has nothing to do with restaurants, food truck, or anything else, has been trying to modernize some of the zoning in town that's aimed at a year when things like the book of press or the factory district were the norm. And it doesn't make sense to zone for that because there are no longer companies that are trying to build those things about or, or sprinkled or anywhere else at the rate they were. So we're trying to make it more flexible for uses that wouldn't make land ugly in places that are quote-unquote industrial. Because otherwise, to be limited, it just, it doesn't make much sense. Where we're not, where we don't need to save this land for a giant company that's kind of, kind of still a big building.
Actually, I have a, have a question that Green, Green Onion sort of made me think of, and that is whether it's you or somebody else, I think you're a fairly mobile guy, but you don't just sit in one place all the time.
Um, no, I mean, I've been sort of attempting to find a semi-permanent home, but at this point, yeah. I mean, and I do festivals and, you know, other things.
It's not to say that he wouldn't like to be set up in a permanent spot.
Okay.
Right.
Uh, well, what I, really my question has to do with the ordinance itself, and that is, if someone's moving around, i.e. mobile, do they have to have a plan for each place that they want to park their?
That was going to be my next question.
Units and come in front of the, and basically fill out a separate, wouldn't have to fill out a separate business application, I assume, because it's one business license. If there's five or six different spots that he's wanting to go, does he have to go and submit five different plans?
I mean.
No, it would be one application, but, you know.
One application in five sites.
I mean, it seems like something like, zoning laws generally pertain to, you know, quote-unquote, like permanent structures. So I mean, that is an extremely logical question. Like I'm not trying to build a deck or put a tent up or whatever, I just have a truck, I park it somewhere and I sell food out of it and I move it, you know, at the end of the night. So in that case, how would I fall under the jurisdiction of the, you know, zoning commission or, you know, whatever?
Well, there's just a couple of things that this ordinance provides for. It provides to make sure that you have the permission of the landowner and that you have, you're not interfering with the parking that's appropriate for that land. And that you're, you know, safeguarding pedestrians and, you know, wherever people may be sitting to eat. So if you can safeguard those things at whatever, however many locations that you want, you're, you're good to go.
Yeah. Do these rules already, what's, what's written in, what's proposed in the ordinance, does that already sort of make it clear where someone can be? I mean, I don't think so. I mean, if you're saying, don't check out parking spots, all right, don't take up a parking spot. You know, don't be in the, in the dry lane. Don't be, don't, don't, don't interfere with pedestrian traffic. But it kind of seems like some of this stuff is in your brain or not?
It is, but I think they just want to be sure that for each location that it's just been either mapped out or, and then shown to the zoning administrator so that they have that plan in file. If you're going to take your cart to a couple of places, you just have that, have that plan for each place.
So it seems like that would also sort of set a food cart up for, well, if there's a giant semi sitting there for three hours, you know, with, I don't know, in gasoline and refueling or whatever. So their site plan says that they're going to be over there where the truck is fueling up right now. So they're going to go to the other side of the lot and they may be recommended for that? Does that make sense?
Well, your example is a good, your example is a good one because in fact, if you talk about a gas station, you wouldn't, you would, you would want, you would want the applicant, such as Green Onion's dad just getting started, the way they're proposing to locate their truck even for a couple of hours during the day, he's actually not going to conflict with things like deliveries. So the property owner is going to know where the tanker truck pulls up to refill what's down the ground tanks, because that's a regular van. And they're going to, you know, they're going to be, they're going to be asked to, to, you know, to, to sort of reflect on that and think about the best location for this mobile food unit so it's not in conflict with other uses on the site that are also permitted. So the process has gone through to establish how the site would work without a mobile food unit. And then the operator of the mobile food unit and the property owner together are going to demonstrate to the zoning administrator how the mobile food unit is going to coincide or coexist with these other uses in a way that doesn't generate conflict. And so that's why it's easier and more effective to have the applicant show up on a piece of paper what the arrangement is going to be, rather than try and establish guidelines in the language of the ordinance that would cover every eventuality. So it's the same, you know, it's the same as if many people come to our office every week and all I want is to add a deck to their house or to put a pool in or a garage or a woodshed or something similar. Most of those, most of those structures are permitted administratively. That is, the zoning administrator issues a permit or denies it. It's fairly simple, but it's still, the process that they go through is they show on a piece of paper the cost of land and what's going to happen so that any potential conflicts can be, can be identified by the zoning administrator early on.
So I have that zoning permit to park my car somewhere?
No.
I mean, because this is definitely a gray area, you know, it's, it's certainly not black and white.
The experience that we have right now is that most, most mobile food unit operators in town are seasonal and so it's any permanent. There are those like you that are, that are less so. And for you to occupy private land, if this amendment goes into effect, you'll be required to show how it's going to work so that any potential conflict can be identified and resolved before it becomes a problem. I mean, it's, yeah, you've got wheels and you're licensed to move, so, you know, it's a bit different from building a shed or a garage or something. But the issues to do with what we call site plan review are still there, which is safe circulation of vehicles and pedestrians on site, complying with aspects of the sign ordinance, and then making sure that the secondary use is not in conflict with the primary use. So for instance, if it was a really tiny parking lot and you wanted to occupy four spaces and then it became a conflict with other people who wanted to use those parking spaces to conduct business at that site, that would be something that would become apparent before you get the permit.
Isn't that the discretion of the, the, the person who owns that?
No.
Property?
No, the parking spaces are actually something that are identified in their original plan. So there's a set of formulas that we use to establish the number of parking places for certain kinds of use, including what we refer to as commercial residential properties. Anything with four apartments or more, we actually control a parking. So all, all the large parking lots that you see in town that are privately controlled, the number of parking spaces is governed by the zoning ordinance. the number of parking spaces is governed by the zoning ordinance.
Yeah.
Hi, Mary Kane. And for all those food service workers, managers, and phenomenal people every day that walk to work or that get to work to serve you food in this area, which is a huge employer, I, I'm thankful that you finally stood up and said, you know, we may have made a little error here in not recognizing that as being a phenomenal industry and impact into our area. My concern for this particular group is a snow cone truck that crosses the border every day and stops frequently at low income properties as the children come out. And I wonder whether that's regulated at all? And if they have given you a plan? Because I'm curious about that, since I saw it sculpt out of low income area as well as an automobile. So I'm curious as to how is it that we're regulating those folks that do cross over?
The, the short answer to your question, Mary, is that that use is not covered by this proposed amendment to the zoning ordinance. Because it's mobile and it's making, it's on the road, it's making short stops. And as far as I'm aware, town, town officials are aware, and it has to be licensed by the health department as well. Because it's serving food, and I think, as my understanding is, it has a business plan. So it is regulated, but not for site plan, site plan issues, because it's not, it's not, it's not fixed for any length of time in one location. So it is regulated.
My name is Amy Gahn. I own Humble Kitchen in Harmony Park Lot, so I'm a good example of somebody who has set up one of these semi-permanent food carts. This is not my strong suit, public speaking here, so, um.
Me neither, I'm just.
I guess first I want to address the, the, the sensation I have that we had some, some very bad publicity in the paper. In, in short, it, the article insinuated that we are, you know, making grilled cheese on the engine block of our car downtown, which is simply not the case, you know. It also specifically stated that none of us carry business licenses, you know. I can't speak for everybody, but I have a Brattleboro business license. I pay meals and rooms tax. I met with the fire chief, the police chief, the town of Brattleboro. I mean, we were checked off and checked off and checked off. So it was sort of baffling to read that article, knowing that we'd done our due diligence. I'm not here to prevent legislation. I realize that there's probably a fee involved in, in this zoning ordinance, and, you know, we haven't discussed that yet, but I can't imagine it would be exorbitant. I hope it's not.
It is like forty bucks.
Okay, well, I, you know, certainly don't intend to die on a forty dollar mountain, so.
Right, nothing, so I just.
You're just putting that up there, right, okay.
Uh, that's not, that's not controlled by us, is it?
Right, I mean, that's why I have to qualify.
This, this is purely zoning, so licensing is like a whole other, and then the health department does theirs.
Right.
We're gonna ask them to do that, which will feel the lowest for these two of them.
Sure, sure, so I want to recognize that, I see that the planning commission is just noting that there's a growing trend in the town and that it needs to be regulated in some way. I, I, I don't object to that, I do object to the press. And I feel that it's detrimental to our business to be painted as people who are operating without business licenses, not contributing to the state of Vermont, not contributing to the town. These are things that we do, and quite frankly, we're an asset to the town. We offer, uh, food diversity that, you know, it's, it's, it's an attraction, the more the merrier, you know? So I'm wondering how this is gonna affect the amount of food carts that can be placed on any given plot of land? That doesn't seem to be in the ordinance, I know it was under discussion before. That's not something that I have in the works, but I, I'm, I'm concerned that it's gonna be legislated and limited over a concern about pedestrians. I'm, I'm happy to make our pedestrians safe at, at our lot. We actually intend to move to Flat Street on July first, we'll be at a new location. I, uh, I guess I'm just here to address the fact that we are fully compliant, fully tax paying, and the press painted us in a bad light. And I don't think that that was the planning commission's intention either. So I'd like to see that rectified in some way. I'm not sure what vehicle we can use to get that done, but it should be done. Because we're doing good things for the community. And that's, you know, we're busy every day, you know, people want our food. And we're approved by the health department, and you all know that, I'm just saying it for the microphone, but, um.
Your, your concern about number of units on a particular property? Is your concern, concern that you don't want more than one? Or that you would like more than one to be able to be on a particular piece of property if the piece of property is big enough and has a, a degree of safety?
I don't want it to be outlawed, that we can't have more than one. I recognize that any addition needs to meet zoning ordinances, whatever they may be. But to specifically say that that's not a possibility from the jump is, is a problem for me. I don't see that addressed in the literature here, so maybe that's not what we're discussing.
Uh, well, if, this is not the, the detailed plan, but I believe actually in the detailed plan right now, that it sits, we do limit it to one unit.
No, that's the language.
We discussed that.
Yeah, we discussed that on June 10th, but it's not, it's not proposed right now to do that. Okay. Just so that you understand what we're talking about. On June 10th, a couple of weeks ago, we had a meeting, and we discussed the ordinances you guys have and the possibility of a lot limit. And we now made a decision on whether it's a good idea, whether we're gonna try to make the law that a certain size should have only a certain number of mobile food units. And I think there's a little disagreement on the board.
Okay.
Just so that it's a good idea.
James? Amy?
Yes.
You're in Harmony Lot.
Currently.
So that's public property?
No. We currently reside on Jonathan Chase's property. Whoever owns the Brooks House at any given moment owns that whole half of the parking lot. We've made arrangements with Jonathan Chase and we're currently in contact with Bob Stevens. But what's happening, because the construction is going to begin, is that we're gonna move down to forty seven Flat Street, which is Peter Johnson's land across from the Whitestone Footbridge. So I, I don't currently have any intention of adding a food cart, but if, I wanted to address that, if that's something that's under discussion here. It's not, that's fine, we can discuss it at a later date. But I, I do just wanna say that we are, as is the Jamaican truck, as is Phil, we are fully licensed. And that was not made clear in the article. That may be all I have to say. Thank you.
Just so everybody knows, this is a broadcast on public television too, that's why the camera's here, so. So message is down on TV. Thank you, Amy. So do, uh, is there, is there anybody else who's waiting? I'm sorry, I don't want to give everybody a chance. Do you guys want to talk about the June 10th, 10th meeting or 12th?
So at the June 10th meeting, there was a discussion of, should there be a limitation on the number of units per site? And there was a discussion of if a property was less than one acre, then maybe there should only be one, um, mobile food unit? And if it was greater than one acre, that there could be two. There was also a discussion about signs. We had identified that the existing zoning ordinance already has sign regulations for mobile food units, and so we decided to stick with that, which is actually a bit more permissive to, that had been written. And that sign section says that, um, you can have, you can have a wall sign on the vehicle not exceeding a total of thirty-two square feet. And then you can have one freestanding sign, um, provided the sign does not exceed eight square feet in area, is not placed in the public way, does not impede pedestrian or vehicle traffic, or designated to parking and is secured so as not to cause a hazard to pedestrians or motorists. And so those are existing regulations regarding the sign now, so.
Okay. I use three signs, which you've all seen in Harmony Parking Lot. They're on cement stanchions, they're very small. I use them to protect the pedestrians and the parking. They, I use them as stanchions, I string ropes through them so that we can mark our spot off, so that others cannot park there. To limit it to one doesn't make sense, because the signage is what is allowing us to have a space. My signs are not in the way of other cars, so if, I guess maybe we need to expand the language to just say that whatever signage you have just doesn't need to be in the way of pedestrians and vehicles. But I need more than one sign. I need more than one structure in order to mark off four walls of an, an, an existing space in a lot. It's just the way it is. I mean, how else does one clearly demarcate a spot? I mean, it's safer to have more than one, if we're talking about pedestrians.
So you want it to be an aggregate, X amount of signs as long as the combined total square footage is not more than one?
As long as we're not in the way of anybody.
I don't think it's about the square footage of the signage, I think it's about the safety of the traffic, the pedestrians, everybody involved.
Agreed.
Creating something very different than what's written, she's using them to create her area with that. Not everybody would necessarily do that, so would that be kind of like just a barrier inside? That it would be up to the administrator who's just, again, that'll come in on a site plan? How would that?
Yeah, it's kind of challenging. I get, I get that you need to delineate your area.
Otherwise, people will park there.
Right.
Yeah, it's not.
In your instance, you assign.
Which is not in the best interest of the town, because we're on private property. I mean, the area that we're moving to on Flat Street is a well-known space for people to quote unquote hide in from the parking metering. So one of the things that we're doing is.
Well, I see what you're saying.
I mean, one of the things that we're doing is eliminating that.
Right. So I think it's something that we need to consider further. One version of what you've done with the, with the rope off the section is to describe that as temporary. And the language of the, uh, and the language of the ordinance is, that can be referred to as temporary site furniture.
Right. I mean, it's a stanchion, it happens to have a sign on it, but it's a stanchion.
Right, so you could. Yeah, so you, there's just a few things to sort of pummel through here, but.
Okay. Signs are contentious around town, I mean.
Right, and it, and it always involves weird math, like you just have to draw a line somewhere. And so we say eight feet, eight square feet, sounds good, and then someone goes, no, the most affordable sign is ten square feet. I mean, there's just no easy way really.
Right, we're also having a banner printed that's gonna hang over our food cart, which we will take, it will come with us and we will take it down at night, but it's so that we can be seen from the co-op parking lot.
Right. That would work as your wall, that would be the equivalent to your wall sign, even though of course it's not gonna be.
Because there is no wall, I see, okay.
But you know, if you had a much bigger vehicle, see, you have a really diminutive vehicle, which is good. But if you had.
For you.
But if you had a very, I mean, you know, if you had a full-size kind of regular food vending truck.
Right.
You know, you would use the wall of the truck literally as your sign.
Right, okay.
I had just a couple more questions since the discussion has sort of continued. One question, um, I guess we never really got to the part, and obviously it's not gonna come to a conclusion today, but, in my case, if I'm moving around to different spots, and, you know, I would, you're proposing that I would need a, have to have a business license, but I would also need a permit for each spot, would each of those permits be a separate fee?
No, it would be, I, I would envision it being one permit. So you fill out the application, you, so you go to three spots, you give us information of where you're looking, one permit on you to be in there.
For the. You get the mission from each property owner, you just compile it and be one, regarded as one per. Right, right. Also, um, I heard you talking about, uh, something about one acre. If it's more than one acre, then it can be more than one, uh, unit. If not, then there, then there can only be one. I feel like putting that type of limitation on a certain area might sort of detract from, you know, if you designate, if, if one area is sort of designated specifically, it seems like it might actually be a good idea if there's an issue with the areas in which, you know, the food carts are desired to be in, if there were one sort of central area possibly, like a quote unquote park, or something that had multiple vendors and that was like a, you know, the designated, uh, area for that to happen in as to not, you know, cause problems with pedestrian or vehicle or traffic or whatever. I kind of feel like putting a limitation on how many units you can have per acre would completely sort of chop that possibility off, so that's the second.
Yeah, it's one of the things we discussed at the last meeting, just sort of trying to decide.
I agree with Phil, and there's this trend in the West Coast of, of food carts rallying up, right? We can stand together, Phil. Food carts rally up, and it's an attraction for the community, you know. I'm not, I'm not insinuating that this is something I want to do tomorrow, but I don't want us to legislate against it today. We, these are very successful movements that are happening on the West Coast. And quite frankly, there's not enough business and commerce going on in this town. So all we really have to do is pull them in off ninety-one, and if we're the attraction, then encouragement is what we need. One acre is a, is a large space for food carts, you know? So.
Oh, sorry. We don't, we don't mean a one acre sized parking lot, we mean a one acre sized parcel, presumably it's already got a building, buildings on it, so.
Right, so we would have to take it as a case by case basis, and I understand that. But if we're gonna rule it out altogether, it doesn't matter if there's a building on the property. Okay? So I'm just, I think that deserves more attention, possibly at a later date, about this, this one acre. This is, one acre is, is not a small space. And, um, I know that we like to keep it rural here in Vermont, but I'm in favor of, of commerce and building an attraction towards Brattleboro.
And something like that wouldn't be too far off of the mark of something like the farmer's market where there are multiple stands in one spot. It's a very similar idea, you know, in theory, so, yeah, that shouldn't be taken off the table, for sure. It's just another attraction, you know, and this is something that people desire. Everybody I talk to, you know, my customers, they come up and buy food from me, you know. I have the support of, of the community, you know, the support of other, you know, business owners and just, it kind of felt like between the article and just this sort of pop, you know, this, this thing sort of popping up semi-randomly that maybe, I, I don't necessarily feel welcome as, as a business owner. I don't really feel supported necessarily, um, by the legislation, you know, quote unquote. Like I said, I feel supported by other business owners, by the community, by people who buy my food, but not necessarily by, you know, the legislation at this point, so.
Well, I think, uh, the fact that we took it up is reflective in great measure of the success that mobile food units have. And I imagine in your shoes, in your shoes, you sort of wanna know, okay, so I'm having success, and now you wanna regulate me? And I understand your frustration with that. The reason it's come with the success. The reason it's come with the success is because I'm concerned on the part of the town that as it's more and more successful, there might be impact on traffic or pedestrian traffic.
Right, and that makes sense.
One, I said, two, I said, three, I said, people might not have is the reason we took it up.
So zoning and, and traffic and pedestrian safety are all things that I think us as business owners support.
Sure.
Silly thing, not to support, you know? But-
Just, oh, sorry.
But we just want to make sure that as we make these laws, that we're not limiting commerce and deterring young entrepreneurs from setting up shop in a very cool town. And we have very cool products, you know?
Very cool people, too.
And we're very cool people, too.
I mean, I'm sort of leaning against the so-called acre unit limitation because I think that parking and pedestrian vehicles are not. The challenge is you can't review those things unless you have a picture of where something's going to be. And it gets more and more complex because every business is different. One can be more mobile than another. And you get these questions like, I want to go five different places, I need five different permits. And it's our goal to do this in good faith. But making ordinances that apply to everyone without hurting individuals' access is surprisingly hard. It's much harder when you speak out of term like I do. But I know that I don't feel that way. And I don't think either the board does, I don't think the staff does. And it's a challenge for us to know that we are regulating successful people in a burgeoning industry. And we want to do it as little as we can. And if you've been here at the last two meetings, I think you would have seen conflict within this board, or between board and staff, or, you know, whatever, because of our concern and, well... I just don't, I, I want you to know that we do have that in mind and it's a challenge that we go through. And that's why we have a public hearing so that the people who are actually affected by law can come on, like, from the site, hey, listen, this, this doesn't work and here's why. And we actually have to confront you. I mean, that's a small number of officers. So that gave me too much of a speech. Why don't-
I'm just going to say thank you for coming and thank you for speaking your feelings, especially. I, I never read anything in the paper, so it sounds like that just wasn't favorably written. And, and I'm just speak, that I'm sorry that that happened.
Food carts are-
That adds a whole different dimension to maybe what we're doing here.
I think it does.
And, and that's what it feels, that would feel like to me if I was in your shoes. And so I'm, I just, even though I have nothing to do with it, I kind of apologize again for that, that procedure.
Food carts are a new movement in this area. And there's probably people out there in this community that may be wary of them because they don't understand that we are regulated by the Vermont State Health Department. And while that was minimally mentioned in the article, it just didn't seem to paint us in a clean and healthful light.
And if I could add to that, that article was, to me, it was very, very poorly written. And it really didn't capture any of, it seemed to only capture one side of the story. Because if you would have been here at these discussions, it was one of the more dis-
It's the most hated I've ever seen it here.
It really was. And, you know, we were, I think we're all sort of trying to, to find a reasonable solution that works for everyone, including, you know, the safety of pedestrians and traffic flow and all of that, but making sure that we're promoting membership. Because I think we're all, we're definitely, we're definitely in support of that.
Thank you.
Can I, please, I have a question.
My name is Barbara Nichols from St. James's Food Truck. It's unfortunate you guys didn't all read the article because it was not a very good article. And it was poorly written, it was inaccurate. And we certainly didn't appreciate it because we were singled out. We were the only business name. So it really implied that we were the ones making the mistakes. And I, I wrote a letter in response and that was in yesterday's paper. So, and we've been talking about it and I appreciate all that Amy was saying earlier. But I also wanted to get back to the signs. Now, did I understand this correctly? Are you saying one sign, one, the truck itself?
That's what the regulations were saying now. One 32-square-foot wall sign on the vehicle. And then a freestanding sign not exceeding eight square feet.
I, I was just-
So to be clear about that, so if you have a conventional sandwich board sign, that's each face can't exceed four, four square feet.
And I just want you to take into consideration that because we're a truck, we're small, so our space is already limited. So when you design, now you're going to design how we use the vehicle because I have two menus on each side of where we serve. And so that wouldn't be able to happen. I'd have to take one of my menus down and I can't use the two walls that I have. And that, that's basically saying you're designing how my business looks. And it's, it's a little frustrating for me. I, I would-
I'm not, I'm not sure that it has to be one sign, a 32-square-feet.
Well, that's why I'm asking because that's what I heard, one sign.
So I think the law-
And that's not going to work.
I think the law has been interpreted that if you had two signs that were each 16-square feet. So in other words, that don't exceed 32-square feet.
That would be great, but if we could just get that in there, that, that would be-
No, that's what it reads.
That's what it reads right now.
Okay. And then is there going to be a limited amount of space? When I got my sign permit, they were saying there was a distance that the signs would have to be, and, and, you know?
Signs usually, they have to comply, they have to be on the mark.
So I'm just wondering if that's going to change?
It means that's the same.
No, it would not be changing.
No.
Mary King again. I'm curious as to whether or not this board has heard anything from Tristan Torino because he is a spokesman for the food and beverage industry that impacts this particular decision-making greatly. His business, and he's not here tonight, would be influenced by whatever decisions that you make. And he has, of course, a greater power in representing all of us in, as being a spokesperson for this industry. And I would request that you include him if, I know you, this is an open meeting, but you may not have invited his comments particularly because he may not even be in the area at this time or maybe, like the rest of us, extraordinarily busy. And it's difficult for food and beverage folks to be able to get out, even for an evening meeting. Unlike the traditional work world, you in food and beverage might work from six in the morning till 12 at night. And, and that might not be an irregular thing to do. So I would encourage you to check with him to see if he has any direct comments.
What is Tristan's current business?
He owns a catering business. He is our house representative.
I knew about that.
But he has a mobile unit, which he frequently uses, at least at the Brattleboro Museum of Art, to cater events. So it is not a food truck per se, but it's a mobile pizza-making unit, which is pretty expensive. It's, it's pretty large. So I think that it would be a good idea to check with him in case that he had some ideas that would impact and help you make some decision-making. I appreciate that.
Thanks. Okay, well, can I ask a question about how, is there any new regulation on how long a car can stay in one spot? Do they have to move, do they have to go? I mean, depending on how they fill out their waiver? Is there any?
No. When we reviewed language from other communities, frequently larger than Brattleboro and some where there's a much bigger food truck movement, it was typical that the expectation was that the vehicle would be taken away with. The vehicle was removed at the end of, you know, when they stopped operating and they shut the business. They took the vehicle with them. Really, the origins of this particular amendment are in addressing what are probably better referred to as seasonal locations. So where individual operators have an arrangement with a, with a private property owner to park their vehicle for an extended period of time and they leave the vehicle in place and go home and not another vehicle.
Is that the discretion of the owner then?
Well, yeah, I mean, you know, it's two factors. It's how the owner, it's how the operator of the mobile, mobile food unit wants to operate. So Amy takes her food unit home every afternoon. But I don't believe, right? And I don't believe the majority of them in town do. They, they're fixed for longish period of time, the season, as it were, right? And so we gave quite a bit of thought to actually making it a requirement that a mobile food unit be, you know, removed from the site at the end of the house of operating. So the same model as Amy uses, but we felt that was, you know, restrictive in some ways of existing uses. So we left that. So I'd say at this point, it's not explicitly dealt with. So it's a decision of the mobile food unit operator or the property owner to come up with a reasonable arrangement, you know, that suits them both.
I have a question.
Did you go up to a late spoken here?
Thanks, Dan. We feel so much better. My question is, did you guys look at the ordinances in other towns and cities before making this decision? And what did you, what did you come out of that? What did you take out of that?
The staff does, can answer that question.
We did.
Can I name your name first, please?
My name is Grace Benetza.
We did a substantial review of other communities. We learned heavily on the ordinance for Raleigh Durham, Raleigh in North Carolina. And looked at other communities. Raleigh was one of the places where they would allow significantly more than one food truck in a parking lot at a time, but all the food trucks were to be removed from the site once they stopped operating.
A lot of regulations also require that they not be located within a certain distance from an existing restaurant. So 200, 300 feet, you could not be located.
And is there something in this ordinance that will relate to that, too?
No.
No, we don't have a regulation on that. A lot of the ordinances have regulations on time of operation.
Right.
Don't have that. Most of them did restrict them to certain commercial districts, which we are saying wherever you can have a restaurant.
And adding some area to that.
Right.
They, most of them did address, you know, trash, signage. Some of them say that you can't take up any existing parking. We say you can take up parking when there's more than enough to satisfy the needs of the other use. Most of them, you know, do require, you know, there's usually a health permit in play. There's usually, there's often a business permit in play. I, I think ours was, was pretty consistent, but more lenient.
Yeah. So many of the bigger jurisdictions, they have, you know, for instance, the city of Raleigh has their own health departments that they have to do.
Right, yeah, yeah.
The same, the same organization is doing all the regulation, whereas in Vermont, it's the state health department that's issuing permits. So in some ways, I would say in general, ours is the less restrictive path each time you get a choice.
I was just curious as to who you, you know, look to for ordinance because it's different all over the country.
Yep.
There are, you know, large areas where food trucks are considered tourist attraction and, you know, their ordinances are created to enhance that kind of business, you know? So just kind of wondering who, who you got your ideas from.
Yeah, there was, there was a lot of suburban towns that I could look at. It would agree, I mean, it drew heavily on Raleigh, but definitely a lighter.
Well, it's kind of difficult, I think, here because Brattleboro is a smallish town, but it also has a sort of urban feel to it. So, you know, making a decision about what actually applies to our particular situation would sort of require some study. So that's why I asked the question. Thank you very much.
Also, just, just to clarify, you know, decisions haven't been made yet. That's what, that's what this process is.
Right, I know. I'm just, I'm just curious because no one has really referred to that this evening. Thank you.
Sure, thank you. So is there anybody that hasn't been heard? If, if nobody has anything more, I will close the public part of it. It doesn't mean you have to leave or anything. That just means we're going to have deliberated here on what to do.
I just want to thank you guys because I can see that you are looking out for our needs. And I can see that based on Grace's question about other communities, that you have taken into consideration that this is a unique community. And I just want to thank you for considering us.
Well, you know, I work a job that a lot of people say a lot of bad things about. And I should have known, but it's not fun. You do throw that stuff around. I just want to say one more time. Tremendous respect for all of you. You have to take risks and, and it's, it's tough enough with there being stigma or publicity or whatever without someone in the government saying something negative. If I am a volunteer, it doesn't really matter from your perspective. And, and I really regret that. I wish I could take it back, so.
We could make a deal with you if you did.
How much do I get by?
I could pay for a cowboy hat with a couple of stick shooters.
I think that could be arranged.
He's a dad, he's up for anything.
I want to see a picture of him with a hat.
Yeah, get some chaff for him, how good. So anyway, but feel free to stick around even though it's, you know, a public hearing. So we've heard from vendors, we've heard from staff.
Have you?
Yeah, I think you need a motion to shut the hearing.
Oh, thank you, thank you. We haven't had a public hearing in a while.
We didn't have a motion due at all.
So I'll entertain a motion to oppose the public hearing.
So moved second.
Okay, a discussion. Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. We're just closing the public hearing. Now we can deliberate on the various things we have before us, which I think we've got proposed ordinance. And if we want to take it up-
Which one?
Yes. I would like a copy of whatever the current proposal is.
Yeah, because we have two different versions here.
We have two different versions.
This is one, but I have no version.
Well, let's, let's start that out.
I have one from 10th of June, but there's changes to that.
Okay. So it's my opinion, if anybody disagrees, I'm happy to hear them, that we should go down this and vote on things that there is some disagreement about. How does that sound to you folks?
I would like discussion before voting.
Right, no. I mean, rather, Phil's board are guaranteed to you. That's what I mean, though.
Are we going to address a point, discuss, vote on the point, address a point, discuss, vote on a point? Are we going to discuss, 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 vote?
I'd like to go piece by piece.
Okay.
Just so that we're talking about one thing at a time. Is that okay with everybody?
Yes. The process after this, so we vote on it and then it goes before the select board.
Yeah, and just in case those in the audience have, are not familiar with this, if we pass something, it does not become law. It goes to the select board and they have to hold their own public hearings. So you get another bite at the apple if something comes out of this that you're dissatisfied with and in all likelihood, more people will be watching that movie and they'll get more coverage. So that's how this works. So the thing at the top, and that's the only reason I'm taking it up first, is the potential change that there be a maximum number of food carts of one on lots less than one acre and two on lots more than one acre. At our last meeting, I, I offered my own opinion that I thought parking and pedestrian, that if, there is no problem with the parking situation or traffic or pedestrians, that I felt that seemed arbitrary. But- I thought that seemed arbitrary, but I don't, I think that may be in my area, I don't know.
I'm convinced from today's hearing that it is a benefit to have kind of a, a grouping of food carts in one place as a tourist attraction.
Okay, I thought you were gonna mean our primary opposition.
That's a surprise, this isn't.
Does anybody disagree with me, or? Okay, well, we don't actually have to vote to take that out. Is it the opinion of staff that we should hold a vote and say aye, or just move on?
No, you should just move on, because that was just something we discussed in June.
Okay. So that's, so we have consensus yet that that not being part of the ordinance is agreeable? Okay. So, no limitation based on acreage as how. Now, the next change is whether something conflicts with the parking spaces associated with the principal use. I thought we all agreed that that was an appropriate change, but.
Where are you?
The next edit, you know, 3A.
C is.
That was the end of the clarification. Yeah, that was the clarification.
That's right.
The word conflict.
Yeah, I just want to make sure before we, okay, so that we do need to vote on, then, right?
Yeah, if you want to add it, and we need to take that as an amendment.
Do I hear a motion to add to 3A after the word vehicular access, or the words conflict with the parking spaces associated with the principal use?
I move that we include that.
Okay, second?
I'll second it.
Okay, any discussion? Okay, hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. So now that takes us to the sign issue. And, um, I mean, it seems sensible to me, the point made by Amy, that the women on freestanding signs may be counterintuitive, and that it may make more sense to treat freestanding signs the way we treat wall signs, which is that there is a square foot limitation, but not a numerical limitation. Is that clear?
Questioning.
Uh, do, do people understand what I'm saying?
I don't understand.
No.
Well, what I'm saying is, instead of saying one, one, one sign not to exceed square, eight square feet, there's not a limit, one sign, but say a limit of, I don't know, 14 square feet, the aggregate of these signs.
Well, the old language down underneath us is up to two signs, blah, 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 blah.
Five feet per, five square feet per sign?
I know, they changed it, so it would comply with the sign ordinance.
Right.
But maybe, maybe just instead of one freestanding, up to two signs, I don't know, how that would, how you need to keep it in.
You want to speak up from the staff?
I know.
We think that there's a public safety benefit associated with adding an arrangement of, you know, ropes and stanchions or something similar, and that the use of logos or small signs to facilitate, you know, to facilitate demarcating the space is probably much more beneficial than getting into calculations about total sign error.
So you don't think it should be qualified as part of the freestanding signage, but maybe add something to indicate that stanchions or other safety stuff can have signage on or logos?
I think, I think just refer to it as site furniture, and that site furniture can carry, you know, a logo or a symbol, you may, you know.
Okay.
You may, you may want to think about how to limit that.
Okay.
Or, you know, I mean, and you probably want to avoid somebody using, you know, the cheap yellow tape that you can get at the hardware store, just to sort of string it, you know, you might want something a little better than, than the worst way possible of doing it, because there are options there, right? Like using crime scenes tape from the police department may not actually do it, but, um, so.
Maybe the health department's.
So I'm trying to think of a, you know, the, the question, the question that we have here is that, you know, Amy's example is a good one. It's attractive, it's appealing, it's easy for her to control, you know, she can put those things away, she can put them out. The, their logo is on each one of the, you know, like small flags or small signs, and they're, they're very small, they're like eight and a half by 11, right? So, um, you could, you know, you could describe the size of each, you know, logo, you know, each flag, or whatever, however you want to approach it, as part of the site furniture, or you could just leave it. Then you, then you run the risk of somebody wanting to put really big signs, or, you know, hang, suspend, you know, the menu from each of the ropes, or the chains, or whatever, and it can get pretty garish pretty fast.
Okay.
So you want to say something like, that site furniture may include logos or small name signs not to exceed whatever dimension?
I was gonna say two square feet.
Eight and a half by 11.
Eight and a half, maybe three.
I mean, each, each of Amy's signs is less than a square foot.
It's bigger than a square.
It is big, is it?
It's bigger than a square, but it's, it's not.
It's not? Yeah. Right.
Two square feet.
Yeah, two square feet, it's still pretty small. Two square feet's okay, I mean, yeah, that's, that's still pretty small.
I would, I would use a four.
I mean, if it's associated with stanchion, if it's associated with marking your space.
Right, that's, I mean, for the fact, I mean, I think what you need to do is be clear that it's for marking out your space, right, so combined with, combined with site furniture.
Okay, you say four, he says two, how about three?
Well, it's good lawyer, right there. I guess, I guess I agree with that. I'm a little bit confused right now. So, so I get what we're doing with the stanchion thing. Are we still gonna be having freestanding signs, or does that go away?
I, I, this would be in addition to that, so the freestanding sign wouldn't have an inadvertent limit on the site furniture signage?
Doubt.
So that it's clear that that's something different.
I'm happy with three.
Now, the other part of the sign, it's been changed from having up to two to now having one, and don't want one round.
Well, see, my, the, the way I read it is you'd have one freestanding plus site furniture signage.
Plus signage.
Right, but, but the Jamaican food cart has two.
Well, no, but this one doesn't say one. The wall sign doesn't have the one restriction, only the, only the.
This one?
Freespan, that would come under freestanding signs.
So you have a wall sign, any combination of wall signs up to 32 square feet.
Oh, okay.
One freestanding up to eight, and then site furniture up to two, three square feet a piece. Does that sound useful to you? I'm not hearing any groans out in the public. Probably a good thing, yes. Okay.
They're keeping conversation over there, we're gonna figure out what that's about.
So James?
Yeah.
Oh, you, you, do you want to just, in respect to the process everyone knows with, you know, where we're at, do you want to resolve the site furniture thing and, and logos first, and then move to the signs, or do you want to do the signs first, and then go back to the site furniture and logo question, or?
I was gonna do, suggest language for the site furniture and do it all as one, if we all agree, because I think we all agree on everything now.
Okay, that's scary.
May I suggest language?
Yeah, go ahead.
Well, you kind of.
Oh, no, no, listen.
I don't want to usurp your emotion here.
Well, the chair and vice chair deliberate. Who's writing our lawyer's?
Well, I wanna, I don't wanna, I gotta be careful.
Quiet, lawyers.
That's right. None of your pictures.
Well, he's doing that, on one of our other handouts, the definition of food cart and mobile food unit, that doesn't go into this, that goes into a different section of the zoning ordinance, where there's definitions.
Yeah, right. So, yeah, the zoning ordinance doesn't include definitions for those things right now.
Okay. So I'm gonna move to incorporate the language of six and six, subparagraph I, and add a subparagraph II, that says.
About A and B.
Yeah, why don't we make it A and B, since the other one's A?
That would make sense.
Okay, so. Okay, so I'm moving to incorporate the language of six and six I, but a little I is gonna be amended to an A, and we're gonna add a B that says, site furniture may include signs affixed thereto of up to square, three square feet. So that's my motion.
How about one freestanding sign within?
Oh, that's A. A is the freestanding.
And that stays as its.
That stays as its, one freestanding up to eight square feet.
And what was B again, did you say it again?
Okay, uh, site furniture may, may include signs affixed thereto of up to three square feet.
And then the freestanding sign is included, the wall signs?
No, six is the wall sign, that's any number, as long as it adds up to something less than 32 square feet. Six A is the one freestanding sign of up to eight square feet, and the new six B is site furniture.
I didn't realize it was just plain old six was.
Yeah, it's kind of an odd way to do it, I think.
Yeah, yeah, it should be A, B, and C.
Well.
Oh, I see it says such as a vehicle may have wall signs.
I love that, affixed thereto.
Affixed thereto, yeah.
I'm curious about. The big box.
If, I mean, if, if anybody, I, we noticed that you guys attacked in that day, if you'd like to contribute here, you're not.
Well, I was just wondering.
Just, just come up to my phone, so that you can, outside, no, that's okay.
I, I don't even remember what they call, but I, you said one freestanding sign, and I was wondering, does that include this, like, the tag sale signs that you stick in the dirt for advertising? That, so that is included, so it can only have one of those? Because I mean, I know that the, the Thai truck on Putten Road, he has two of those now, he has two, and that, so he's gonna be affected by that change, and is there a reason you can only have one?
Sunblock.
Yeah, to avoid this type of threat.
Then make it two, I mean.
They're not that big, I mean, having one fold-up sign, the sandwich sign.
Yeah.
And one that you can post. And, and the only way you can even do that is if you have some property where you can put them, you know, because they go in the dirt.
Right.
I, I would have no problem bringing it up to two.
I'd accept a friendly amendment of Mr. Brazino, that we change it to two freestanding signs, but they would still be, have the limitation.
I'm in.
Accepted friendly amendment, Brazino, I think I need another second one.
Second.
And if anybody else has anything, feel free, I mean, public hearing may be closed, we still want to know what you think.
I have a 10-foot banner printed in my mailbox right now.
Yeah, you put it on your truck, it wouldn't violate this.
It's gonna hang over the truck, I have two stanchions built in cement blocks, and I'm gonna put it up and take it down with me every day, it's gonna be right over the truck, it's not gonna be in anybody's way.
That would be your, that would still, that would be still less than the three feet you're already allowed.
It's considered your wall sign.
Except if you have, how many feet high is it?
Two.
And if you go to someone and they say it's not, you know, on the record, without saying that it's our intent, that something like that be considered a wall sign.
I appreciate it.
So we've got friendly amendment, six A's are up to two freestanding signs not exceeding eight square feet total. Any further discussion? Public? Okay.
That one, and then the B is the furniture one.
Okay, so hearing no more, all those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, any opposed? Okay.
That's on signs, right?
Yeah, but that's it.
That's it.
Yeah, one day you want something global.
Right, so, so we've now got our text, and those are the only changes. The only areas I think of any disagreement. So with that said, I vote for a motion to approve a new section 5192 applying to food cart and mobile food vending units.
I move that we approve the section 5192 food cart and mobile food vending thing.
Unit.
Unit, whatever, zoning, the zoning one.
Need a second? Okay, any further discussion?
We just want to know when the flipboard needs to be.
We don't know, but they need to notice at least 30 days in advance.
Yeah, we don't know, it's gonna give them the paperwork, they're working fine, but you don't know.
What's the notice requirement they have to guys know?
They need a 15-day one.
15 days.
So they need to notice at least 15 days in advance, if you want to go back.
So then it's a question of their workflow.
And then they decide on the fee we give?
Yeah, we, and we're giving them a recommendation.
Okay.
And the recommendation's gonna be 40.
Okay.
That's ready, right?
Annually.
Yep.
So that said, I, I think discussion's closed, if anybody wants to say anything, now's the chance, okay? And nobody here, okay? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? No, 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 I just said my eye really late. Sorry.
I lie.
So we've got a, an extension from Brazino, no other record. Was there something else I need to?
Yeah, you do, you do a.
You need to do some addition.
Definition.
An industrial.
An industrial.
Oh, okay. So, let's see, I don't think we have any disagreements about either the definitions for food carts and mobile food units, or the suggestion that restaurants would be a use industrial. Am I wrong? Well, I would suggest an omnibus motion, whatever that means, and that would allow, that would adopt the current proposed definitions for food carts and mobile food units, and allow restaurants.
I make a motion that we have an omnibus vote on the two elements of definition and, second?
Restaurants and the industrial.
Restaurants and the industrial, because we see that as an opportunity.
Uh, I would second that. And is there any discussion? Anything else from the public? You can be heard on this if you want.
But allowing us to be an industrial now?
Wouldn't just be, it would be restaurants, anybody serves food, and it was also lots of other uses allowed, industrial. Uh, okay, well, hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? Okay, so that takes care of it. I just want you guys to know that we appreciate you being here very much, and it actually makes it easier for us, even if it's kind of scary when people say, you don't understand why you're doing this, it helps us write the laws, or, or try to propose the ordinances to the select board, I should say, with much more confidence, knowing that the people who govern by those laws are sitting there telling us what they think, so it is something we appreciate from here.
Significant changes came on tonight, Steve.
Yeah? I have a question, I just recently purchased my signage for $40, so let me, I, will then have to buy this one too, is that on top?
I think your grandfather.
Your grandfather with what you've got.
No, what you, what you got.
Until next year. Yeah, I mean.
Well, you won't need a, when you get the zoning permit, that's inclusive of your sign, so next year when you get the zoning permit, if it goes through, you wouldn't also then get a sign.
Right. So the, you, you don't have to get a separate sign permit and a zoning permit, you'll get the zoning permit, which will allow you to have a certain number of signs.
But until this passes or changes, what they hope me to do is what I should be doing.
Yeah, until this becomes law, yes.
Not always conceivable that this could be rejected, nothing will change.
It's pretty much the same, I mean, I have two, I can have two signs, and just tell me how many I'm required.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Phil, do you want to say something before we go?
Um, I just wanted to know specifically what the definition of, your, your definition of a mobile food unit is.
Believe it was consistent with the state, it's a licensed motorized vehicle, parentheses, vans, trucks, or trailers that are pulled by vehicles on public roads, parentheses, that prepare and serve.
Thank you.
Well, do we have any business before we?
I don't believe we do.
Uh, our next meeting.
Oh, actually, we have a.
Oh, actually, we have a.
Okay.
July 8.
Thanks, Don.
That's our first.
Okay, so, there's a motion to the chair, and I'll.
Second.
Are they due in a second? Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, the chair.